Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise, assist with the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice and justice for all.
Roll call of the members.
Mr. Franti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Thai.
Here.
Mr. Visconti.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Here. It should be noted that Mr. Sinella is joining us via cellphone. I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second, all in favor, all opposed, so moved. Ms. Thai.
Move to go to whole business first, move that to the head of the calendar place.
Whole business, Mr. Franti.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Franti.
Yeah, second. Okay, at this time, I would like to take off the table to the ASME Local 1383 contract vote. It was finally settled and it's up to us now to vote on it, so we can move on to the next step.
Any discussion? Okay. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Franti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Thai.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes. Okay.
Move to return to the regular order of business?
Motion to return, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, all opposed. We'll move back to the regular order of business.
Can I just comment on the ASME?
Yes. Dr. Kelly.
If I could just quickly, briefly, on the ASME contract. First, I want to thank Mr. Franti and Mr. Visconti who did a great job supporting us through the extended contract negotiation period, but I also want to thank the members of the ASME unit themselves, in particular JT Lyons, Michael Martin, Chris Salton, Dave Patch, Pauline Lyons, Christine Cavanaro, Karen Cynthia Mike, and Dee Dee, who really did a great job on behalf of their colleagues to make sure that we had a comprehensive package that I think benefits both the school committee and the ASME members, but ultimately really helps the kids of Revere, which is the most important thing. So I want to thank everybody for their collaboration and helping getting over some hurdles so that we could come to agreement on that contract.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other members?
This time. It might be appropriate at this time to move to grant the similar raise.
Okay. Grant the raise that was given to the ASME employees to the non-contract, non-union employees.
Second motion.
Okay, it's the second. Any discussion?
If there is reluctance on the part of the school committee to do that tonight, I'll withdraw my motion.
Why don't you just put it to the next meeting? Tableton, next one.
I'll withdraw it.
The second has to withdraw first, Carol. I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sinella.
Okay, so we'll withdraw that, but that, you know, perhaps we bring that back up to put on the agenda to discuss.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Franti.
At the present time, while we have Mr. Sinella on the phone, I would like to, okay, sorry, I'd like to, this time, to go out of order to hiring the school committee legal counsel. I believe we had two candidates for the position. Valerio was one of them and I believe Stone was the other, and I think would be the appropriate time to have a vote. So I'm making a motion that we vote for the legal counsel right now. So move.
Motion to vote, second. Second from Mr. Franti, any discussion? We'll take a, so the motion, just so I'm correct, is to vote on who is going to be the legal counsel. So we'll, as we call the roll, we'll have the individual member state which law firm they would like to hire, and that would be either Valerio or Stoneman. So we'll call the roll and either of those law firms will be the answer. Thank you.
Mr. Franti.
Valerio.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Valerio.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Valerio, Dominella, and Hillman. I want to give credit to all of them.
Mr. Sinella.
Mr. Sinella, are you still here?
Yes, Valerio.
Okay, Valerio.
Ms. Thai.
Valerio.
Mr. Visconti.
Valerio.
Mayor Arigo.
Valerio. The hiring of a school committee legal counsel is done, and we will now go back to our regular order of business and the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the highlights, I think, of the year at Revere High School is the work that our poetry team does in presenting either original works or works of other people. It's a wonderful program put together by Ms. Sarah Column, who was one of the teachers at Revere High School, and pleased to let you know that tonight we do have with us our RHS champion, Shiarra Pyris, who's going to share her poetry with us in just a minute. But before she comes up to the mic, I also want to recognize Ava Hawks, who was the first runner-up, and Alessandra Santos, who was the second runner-up in the Poetry Out Loud competition. Shiarra, maybe you can come up and tell the committee members first a little bit more about the competition, and then I know, I think that Ms. Column told you that we're going to ask you to recite your poem, is that right? So, great, you can join us at the podium.
So the Poetry Out Loud competition is where certain classrooms at Revere High, and hopefully soon the entire RHS population, English classrooms, learn, choose a poem, and then memorize it, and then recite it, and then perform it with their class during the January time, or December. And I really enjoy this because I fell in love with literature and poetry when I was young, and this has allowed me to continue falling in love and to learn and to really dissect the poems that I choose. So I hope you guys enjoy what I perform. I'm going to have to go in the middle because...
For the earth has spoken to you, her magma crayall, full-throated syllables uprising from deep down, in honest elocution rudimentary sound guttural nouns forthright strong, the rumbled conviction of verbs, unfettered by reticence, as the first poetry of creation. A secret has passed between you, so wonderfully terrible, it laid your city's prostrate, raptured your citizenry. Now we look to your citizens' remnant cable TV and garble up theories thinking ourselves saved. Only the wise among us pin our ears to the ground, listening in hope of catching even a half syllable of the language forming like a new world on your tongue. Thank you.
Any members have any questions?
Ms. Thai. I knew Ms. Thai would.
Well, I think the Poetry Out Loud is a wonderful experience, certainly for me as a member of the audience, and certainly, and I would think for you as a participant in it. Why did you choose that poem?
So I'm Haitian, and I immigrated to the United States.
Excuse me, maybe you should get the...
So I'm Haitian proudly, and I immigrated to the United States when I was eight years old. And so my poem is about the Haitian earthquake that occurred in 2010, and I just remember, like, during that time feeling helpless. So when I read this poem, and it's talking about, like, the earth and, like, our language and the beauty of our language, and yet even, like, with the earthquake, the power of our citizens, it really connected to me, and I really wanted to do it justice, which is something that I look for connection and the desire to, like, really, like, to feel my poem. So I was really excited when I found it and was able to do it justice.
Lovely, thank you. And has your experience in the Poetry Out Loud enhanced your life? Have you decided, for example, to write more poetry, or to read more poetry, or to participate in further competitions, or just to stand on the street corner and give poems?
So it's deepened my love for poetry, and I think more of the reading side, like, for example, I'm taking AP Literature and Composition right now, and I've gained a new appreciation for poetry because when you're learning to recite it, every little thing matters, like, you have to know the rhythm of your poem, and whenever we have assignments, and hopefully in the AP exam, I feel like I can understand it a lot deeper and just take it a whole new level that I wouldn't be able to if I wasn't during this competition.
Thank you very much. It was lovely to have, to listen to you.
Thank you.
Any other members? Thank you so much, Diana Luth, for what's happening. Take, great job. Great job. Thank you.
The next item on the superintendent's report is athletic affiliation, and as the committee is aware, and I think many in the community are aware, we've been contemplating departing the Northeast Conference to rejoin some of the districts that we used to compete with in the Greater Boston League, and establish a new or re-envisioned Greater Boston League. And I've invited our Director of Athletics and Physical Education and Health, Mr. Frank Shea here, to give us an update on where that stands. He's going to talk a little bit about the progress and the meetings that have happened with the Northeast Conference and the group of districts that is contemplating creating this new Greater Boston League. So, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Hopefully tonight I can dispel any rumors that are out there and kind of put to rest exactly where the thought process came from and why we're considering going back to the Greater Boston League. So I'll try to be brief and then answer any questions at the end, but Revere left the Greater Boston League 14 years ago. In about 12 years ago, the GBL began to really dismember with Peabody leaving, and Quincy leaving, and Waltham, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Over those last 12 years, the GBL was left at four schools, Medford, Malden, Everton, Somerville, and four schools really does not comprise a competitive league. And those kids unfortunately, for the great amounts at that time, had to compete just against each other, had a hard time filling their schedules, and kind of felt left out because they had applied many times for other leagues, nobody accepted them. Two years ago, on their third try to get into the Northeast Conference, the Northeast Conference principals at the time accepted the four GBL schools into the Northeast Conference for a four-year pilot program. The original acceptance was that there would be a vote in September 2019 to either allow the GBL schools to continue in the Northeast Conference, or that they would be voted out and be back on their own. During this whole process of allowing the GBL schools in and creating schedules and really trying to find a good fit for those schools, things came up with principal turnover, and the feelings of the principals in the room kind of changed that they really didn't want the GBL schools. So a vote was pushed up until this past January, at which time the GBL schools were voted out of the Northeast Conference by a vote of seven to five. They needed eight votes. Revere was strongly in favor of them staying. Over the course of those two years, while our teams competed against the GBL schools, I noticed that we shared many things in common with the GBL schools: sizes of programs, programs offered, the enrollment, diversity, culture, was all very similar with these four schools. I started to contemplate why we were in the Northeast Conference and why we weren't more of a GBL school. I began to have discussions with current coaches and former coaches and former athletic directors here as to what it would look like if we ever went back to the GBL, and most of what I heard was, yeah, we never should have left. So at the time when the vote was made, I mentioned to the Northeast Conference Athletic Directors, I said, if the GBL is voted out, Revere is contemplating going with them. I had discussions with Dr. Perella and Superintendent Kelly, giving my reasons, and both Dr. Perella and Superintendent Kelly supported me. In January, I verbally let the ADs know. In February, we submitted a letter to the NEC President, Thomas Strangie, the Principal at Latin English, and Secretary Treasurer, Leslie Murray, announcing our intentions to leave. There was supposed to be a vote of the principals in February, it was put off, it is actually going to be this Friday, March 1st, and that would be the official vote as to whether they'll let us go or not. I apologize for the swiftness of this move because, like I said, the vote was supposed to come in September of 2019. It got rushed up, and there's certain deadlines within the NEC Constitution that say you have to have letters, you have to have verbal announcements in ahead of all the different steps that were coming. So we acted quickly, and here we are now, today. The biggest problem with the move was the football schedule. Football schedules are made six to nine months in advance. It's very difficult to get non-league football opponents. So when I met with the NEC ADs, I made a proposal that said, if you let us go with the GBL as of July 1st, we'd be willing to keep our football team in the Northeast Conference for one more year. That would give your schools a chance to get non-league opponents for 12 months, and it wouldn't hang up any of the NEC schedules. The ADs of the NEC were in agreement that that was the right thing to do. We redid the football schedule, and the Northeast Conference ADs were going to propose this to their principals before the vote. So a couple things can happen. If we're voted out as of July 1st, all our programs with the exception of football would be a GBL, would have GBL schedule, football would remain in the NEC for one more year. The next thing is, if we're not voted out, we can be kept in the NEC in all sports for up to two years, but I don't think that that's going to happen. Most of the time, they grant the wishes of the teams that want to leave. If it's approved on Friday, then we have to get approval from the District Athletic Committee through the MIAA, and our, my position, our position is, with the GBL trying to reform, it's much easier for us to go with them now than to wait and go with them at a later time. The wishes of the GBL are to reach out to several other communities over the next couple years, and hopefully, in a couple of years, we will have a seven or eight-team-strong Greater Boston League again. It really, it helps us because, like I said, we're comparable in population enrollment, diversity, and culture. It allows competitive balance, especially for our girls' programs. Many of the GBL schools don't have programs like, they don't have feeder programs for tennis and field hockey, much like us in the NEC with Swamp Scott and Marblehead and some of those Beverly, those kids are playing at a much younger age, and we're at a big competitive disadvantage against those kids, and that's shown year after year after year after year. It's a smaller league, which allows our teams to go out and get more non-league games, many of which will be against the NEC teams again, but we'll get to pick and choose who we can compete with and who we can't, which, again, helps our developing programs. Lastly is travel. Obviously, the GBL schools are much closer, which allows our teams to leave a little bit later and return earlier at night, which is a big thing on school nights, to get our kids here before, sometimes if they're up in Gloucester, they get home at 10:00, 10:30 at night, so that wouldn't happen. And just because we're going to the GBL, it does not hurt our rivalry with Winthrop. We'll continue to play Winthrop on Thanksgiving Day. We'll continue to play Winthrop in other sports. So the schedules won't change much, it will just give us a lot of flexibility, and coaches the flexibility to play who they want to play and travel where they want to travel. So, a couple things can happen. Like I said, we can be granted immediate release, which is what we want, or we can be held for up to two years, and we'll know after Dr. Perella votes on Friday.
Thank you. Any members have any questions or comments? Ms. Franti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, you know, going back to the GBL, which was ancient years ago, and bringing it back, and maybe we being the fifth team, and hoping to grab other teams to develop the conference, what about, if it does happen in July 1st, are you going to be able to get these schedules lined up for the winter sports?
Yeah.
You know, what the team's playing?
Yes.
So they're going to be playing more non-league games than league games?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, yes. And again, that doesn't hurt us as far as the MIA tournament goes or anything like that. You know, sometimes if you are in a really strong league and you're at the bottom, you're locked into all those league games, and your kids, sometimes, they can't keep getting up off the mat if they keep getting beaten, 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 beaten. By having less league games, if you're not going to be strong, it allows the coach or myself to contact schools that have similar programs, and our kids can have competitive balance by playing more non-league games. So it's not necessarily a negative.
No, I don't think it would be a negative, I'm just, you know, concerned in who would be playing. You know, I mean, if we're Division III or IV and we, you know, have to play Division V or VI team, obviously it would be an unfair competitive advantage because you're going to be better than what they are, so you start racking up wins, and you know what wins get you, you know, gets you tournament bound for all sports.
Yep.
So I mean, it's probably the right move to make, in my opinion, that, you know, bring us to a more competitive balance of play teams, and hopefully they'll bring back, you know, the Alliantons and the other teams that will make it a better league. So I hope, I think it's the right move, and hopefully, you know, they'll let us leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Visconti.
Frank, have you reached out to the other schools and about joining that, the GBL, and what's the likelihood of that actually happening? I mean, is it, you know, obviously we want to build that GBL league to, you know, whatever, seven, eight, try to make it as strong as possible. Is that really likely?
I could say this, there's been discussions with four or five other schools.
Yeah.
I would not think it's probable that we get all those schools.
Sure.
But I would think in the next couple of years, we could go to six or seven, for sure. That would be the hope. If we got more than that, that would be great.
Any other members? Good luck, hopefully they release us and we can move on.
Keep you posted, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the superintendent's report is a series of grants that I want to make the committee and the community aware of. I think, you know, we often talk about how resourceful our teachers need to be because unfortunately our finances don't permit excess as they do in some other districts. And a number of our teachers have applied for and been awarded grants in this past month, and I just wanted to highlight those for you. The first one is a $1,500 grant from Aramok Corporation. It's their health and wellness grant, which was awarded to the phys ed teachers at the Wayland School who submitted an application and, you know, received that award for $1,500, which they intend to use to play, to pay for basketballs and volleyballs for a part of a program that they're running at the Wayland School. So we're thankful to those teachers for their extra work in applying for the grant and congratulate them on their receipt of the grants. In addition, a number of teachers across the district, teachers and administrators in schools, applied for some of the Revere Cares mini-grants, and we actually had, let me see here, one, two, three, four, five, six awards totaling over $8,000. So of course, we're very thankful to Revere Cares for their generosity, but we're also thankful for the, to the teachers who took the time to submit applications. The first one is a $900 award to Revere High School's School Redesign Improvement Team and Youth Health Leadership Council on helping students reduce their stress, which is obviously a great program, we could probably all use it, but I'm glad the kids will have it. The second award is $1,959 to the Beachmont Elementary School for a new STEAM program, a new STEAM club that's going to take place after school. The third is a therapy program in partnership with North Suffolk Mental Health at the Garfield Middle School, particularly targeting newcomers, which are students who are new to the country, and that award was for $378.84. There was an $840 award to the Garfield Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization to assist in the pay, in the expenses for student field trips. A $940 award to the Revere High School Outdoors Club for a two-day camping trip to Mount Cardigan Lodge. This is a field trip that is, was on the agenda for approval by the school committee tonight. And finally, there was an award of $3,210 to Seacoast High School for Deanna's Educational Theater, which conducts performances that help kids talk about issues associated with relationship violence, bystander intervention, and cyberbullying. So all in all, over $8,000, which is really exciting, and again, we're thankful for those teachers going the extra mile to submit those applications and receive those awards. And finally, I want to talk about two other awards that we recently received, and these are from Project Lead the Way, which is a science program that we already have at the Susan B. Anthony Garfield Middle Schools. Wayland actually received an additional 7,500, I should say, that we already have at the Susan B. Anthony, the Garfield Middle School, and the Wayland. Wayland received an expansion grant of $7,500 to expand the number of kits at each grade level, kindergarten through fifth grade. And the Beachmont received a brand-new Project Lead the Way grant of $12,350 to have two science kits presented at each grade level. So it's been a lucrative month in the grant world for the Revere Public Schools, and we thank everybody who took the time to apply and seek those additional funds that help all of our kids have a first-class education.
Great, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any members have any comments or questions?
All right, the next item on the superintendent's report is fifth-grade tours of the middle schools, and I have the calendar, it's posted on the slide here. The tour is actually already started today. As you can see, the Lincoln School and the Hill School took tours of the Remy Marsh, the Garfield, and the Susan B. Anthony. We have Beachmont and Wayland going on their tours February 28th, this Thursday, and then next Monday, the Paul Revere, the Garfield will have their tours. And we, of course, invite parents to tour these schools as well. The important times to note are the anticipated arrival at the first school, and you can see the order of middle schools for each of the elementaries is listed to the right here. This information was sent home to parents, but in case anybody misplaced it, here it is again. If you would like to join your child for the tour, you can arrive at the first middle school at 9:15 a.m. We anticipate arrival at the second middle school at 10:15 a.m., and from there, we would go to the third school. The schedule can get a little bit off time, as we did this morning, we ended up about a half an hour behind with the Hill School, and that was due to a delayed start and then some traffic issues along the route. But we do our best to stick to these time schedules. Parents are not invited on the buses with the students, but they are invited to use their own transportation to meet the students at each of the three middle their own transportation to meet the students at each of the three middle schools. And then foreshadowing, of course, the middle school visits foreshadow the lottery, which is scheduled for 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 11th. And parents can anticipate receiving their middle school application forms once the school visits are completed, with ample time to return them prior to the lottery. And at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Mokaba, who is going to give us an update on some work that our educators have been working on over the course of the school year, and that is our logic models. You'll all recall that we have the high school logic model, which was presented to the school committee a number of times in its development and which was finalized last year. And just for those at home, I want to show you where you can access that high school logic model. So if you go to your web browser and then go to the Revere Public Schools website, and for those who are unfamiliar, our new website is reverekt12.org. Once you get to the website, I'm going to change my view. I'm going to select Revere High School. And then RHS links, and you can see right down the bottom here is our vision of a graduate, which is another name for our logic model. And I know that folks have seen this one for a while, since we've gone over it at PTO meetings and at school committee meetings and other places, but you can access this on the website. And we had students and teachers and parents who worked on developing this over a couple of years with Brandeis University through our Nellie May Grant. And now with the semifinal, of course, all of these documents are always open for revisions. We have what we hope describes our expectations for any student graduating from Revere High School in the next decade. So this plan hopefully describes what students would look like by 2027. But it really is our hopes and expectations for all students. And this, this work on the logic model, of course, feeds, came from, I don't know what I just did there, came from all of the work that we've done with our parent surveys, teacher surveys, student surveys, identifying where we needed to do work. And of course, that sets the mission and vision for the schools, along with our school improvement plans, our superintendent goals. All of it comes from the same pieces of information so that we can have a through line. And what the team did this year, this past school year, so far, it's not finalized, it's still in draft form, but we want to share with the committee and get your, your feedback as well. And then we'll be working in PTO meetings with parents to get feedback. But we developed a logic model for the elementary level and the middle school level so that we can start with our kindergarteners and have identified if we do these things right at elementary school, these kids will be ready for middle school. And then if we do these things right for our middle schoolers, they'll be ready for high school. And then if we do these things right for our high school kids, they'll be successful in college and career and life beyond. So with that, I'll stop talking, and Dr. Mokaba will take us through the documents.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. As Diane alluded to, we had teams of teachers from each of the elementary schools and each of the three middle schools that worked with a consultant from Brandeis University to develop each of these logic models. You will see that they resemble the high school document. The design, as Diane said, that we see a through line connecting all three documents. What you will notice is that there are assumptions, student-focused strategies, outcomes, and long-term impacts for both the elementary and the middle school. So these documents are designed to mirror, at an age-appropriate level, what we expect for each of our graduates. So looking at the middle school first, in developing this model, the intention was to scale back from and draw from the high school skills and develop middle school skills, expectations, and strategies that were appropriate. So as you can see in the assumptions, the first five, A1 through A5, actually mirror our assumptions for our high school students directly. So things like, we believe and we know that in an increasingly globalized world, the capacity for people to operate successfully across a diverse belief system and cultures is critically important. You will see that in our middle school document and in our elementary document. Some of the assumptions that are middle school appropriate and that the team felt were important to include were, students will be given an opportunity to have a voice. This is A6 in the assumptions. And be more engaged in their education. Drawing from the focus on social and emotional learning, social and students who utilize SEL strategies will be able to interact appropriately with peers and adults. A8 talks about establishing effective work habits in order to prepare them to better succeed, both in middle school and high school and beyond. In one of the focus areas, one of the assumptions is that our students will develop a growth mindset to be better prepared to succeed. So those are some of the assumptions that the middle school team felt were important. The student-focused strategies, again, here, you, in, if you were to compare the two documents for the middle school and the high school, you'll see similar language. The second assumption says that all middle school students will be able to exhibit appropriate behaviors and interactions with adults and peers by learning and practicing etiquette and social norms, learning and practicing roles and boundaries for interactions with each other, solving non-academic problems constructively and independently, and reflecting on actions and interpersonal relationships. Another student-focused strategy was developing effective habits of work, which, again, you will see in our elementary model, to become active learners. They will be kind, thoughtful, and respective members of a learning community. They'll develop and learn to be critical thinkers, problem solvers, and be responsible for their own learning. So now we're looking at setting goals, self-assessment, and reflection. And finally, another student-focused strategy is that students will provide input on curricular and extracurricular opportunities and efforts, and they will participate in assessments of school improvement and have a voice in affecting change at the middle school level, something you see as echoed in the high school as important, that our students have a voice. Some of the outcomes that we want to see for all our middle school students is that they will develop an increased cultural competence with improved abilities to understand, appreciate, and interact with people from other cultures, that they'll have developed critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills to become producers and not only consumers of knowledge in the 21st century. They'll persevere and embrace a growth mindset. They'll demonstrate resourcefulness in school, with their families, and in social settings. And furthermore, one of the outcomes that we hope to see is that we will see a decrease in proficiency gaps among all of our students. And again, this document was designed to reflect what we hope to see by 2027, that all of our middle school students will be high school-ready, demonstrating these skills that we identified in this document. So similarly, at the elementary level, some of the assumptions, again, we are looking in, for increasing the capacity of students to understand a diverse belief system. Another important assumption is that the diverse nature of Revere's elementary student body is a strength that brings with it the school's responsibility to develop and implement personalized approaches that support all students. We assume that families have an awareness of their child's progress and daily experiences. And here too, you'll see that the assumption is students who use social and emotional learning will be able to interact with peers and adults. So this document really talks about the, building those foundational-level skills that we expect our students to have. In the student-focused strategies, it talks about students being able to enhance their learning and growth to become critical thinkers, and what that looks like at an elementary level. They'll regularly tackle complex tasks. They'll engage in higher-order thinking through student-centered learning. They'll collaborate with students of all cultures and academic backgrounds. Students will begin to develop effective habits of work. Students will develop appropriate executive functioning skills per grade level to complete daily routines. Students will develop cultural proficiency with peer and adult relationships. And students will have a general sense of appropriate behaviors and interactions with adults and peers. Some of the outcomes developed for our, all of our elementary students will expect them to demonstrate curiosity and passion in their learning, resilience in the face of challenges, and commitment to their personal learning goals. We hope too that they will have an effective communication skills, specifically reading, writing, listening, and speaking, to function in school and in social settings. We will see that this, they will possess these transferable skills for making sound decisions, exploring or persevering and embracing a growth mindset. And the long-term impacts are that all of our elementary students by 2027 will graduate as lifelong critical thinkers and learners who are well-prepared for access and success in the three areas identified, serving as culturally proficient and contributing members of their community, acting appropriately in a middle school setting by demonstrating the principles of social-emotional learning and taking ownership to meet the academic rigors of middle school, and that they will enter middle school with increasing opportunities for enrichment and decreasing dependency on interventions. And the next step in this process is that we hope, as Dr. Kelly said, to engage the school committee. We will be looking to, for the principals, to engage their school improvement teams and their PTOs in providing us with feedback on this draft. So they will plan to share these documents with them if they have not already. And finally, we will be holding a parent forum to specifically provide us with any additional feedback that parents might have on these two documents as we work through this vetting process.
And of course, we invite any committee members who would like to comment and email Danielle, and we'll incorporate that into the document. The last item on the superintendent's report is an update on the work we've been doing as a district around the district goals, the superintendent's goals. So I just wanted to remind you of all of that. And, you know, hopefully, in what Danielle just described as our logic models, you can see echoes of that, hopefully, in the goals as we talk about closing achievement gaps, empowering students, and making sure that we have a high-quality educational program for all kids. So what I did, and I know that the school committee members have copies of this, they, this is in the packets, I went through each of our strategic initiatives that we established back in September and just gave kind of a status update on each of the process benchmarks, and then also on the interim measurements of impact and early evidence of achieving each of the benchmarks. So I'll highlight in this, first strategic objective was about building community and increasing the opportunities for parents, students, and educators to provide input and feedback that inform the district decision-making. These first couple of pieces have already been completed, as you can see here, and have been included. We used the feedback from our MCIA surveys last June, which were to students and staff, and also our parent surveys to inform all of the school improvement plans and the district improvement plan. We're still working on the third benchmark, which was to attend, to increase opportunities for parents to engage with central office. As you know, we've been attending some parent-teacher meetings in schools, and we're going to continue to do that, so we listed that as ongoing. The next one, we wanted to increase participation on RELB councils. This is also ongoing. So far, we have 10, 10 new members of the RELBs this year, the RELB councils. We have a meeting with them on Wednesday afternoon, and I know that one of the charges that we're going to give them is to make sure that they have a parent on each of the councils. Now, if, the parent could also be a teacher or an administrator, but there needs to be somebody on that council who has children in the Revere Public Schools. And if there's no staff member in that role, then they'd be seeking a member of the community to come on and help, hopefully, somebody with interest in whatever the area of the RELB is focusing on. And of course, our data to determine why educators choose to leave the district is ongoing. We did develop an exit survey. We have piloted with two members of the district who left over the course of the school year, made some refinements as a result of that, and are ready to do the exit survey with everybody who, who chooses to leave us. We wouldn't administer the survey to, to some folks who might leave out of their own volition, but for those who do, we would, we want to understand better why people might be deciding to move elsewhere. As for the early evidence of benchmark change, the one thing that I want to highlight here is that one of our pieces was to establish a roster of consistent participants on the RELB that include at least one parent, two administrators, and six teachers. And this is an area, as I mentioned just a minute ago, that we need to focus on in order to achieve this goal by the end of the year. The rest of the pieces are either ongoing or completed, or, you know, or we feel like they're, we're making the right amount of progress at this point in the year, but that's the one spot that we feel we need to do a little bit of better work on. So we're going to focus there. Our second strategic objective was around teaching all students, providing opportunities for targeted intervention, to close the achievement gap for all student groups. And I won't read through all of these process benchmarks now that you can understand the form. I'll just highlight that the two that are ongoing are in the middle. The first is decreasing the performance gap between ELL and other students. We need to get this year's data back before we're going to be able to accurately assess that measurement. And the second is decrease the performance gap between special education students and other students. Those are the two places where we saw a significant problem, and that's why we have focused on those areas. For the early evidence, most of the benchmark processing for early evidence has been completed. At the, the student evaluation piece is ongoing, as I mentioned, until we get that data back. Our third strategic initiative was provide ongoing professional development to teachers and administrators on effective assessment and grading. And of course, this is another piece that speaks to helping students take ownership of their learning by giving them the kind of feedback that they're able to act on. So it speaks right back to that student logic model or our vision of a graduate and all of those pieces. And it also speaks to equity and making sure that our assessment practices are fair to all kids. And as we've talked about before, the grade that you get in math should be based on what you know in math, not whether you had Miss Kelly or Miss Ty, and whether Miss Kelly was a strict grader and Miss Ty was maybe a more lenient grader. I don't know. Somehow I doubt it, but.
No.
But anyway, for kids, it's not fair if their grades are based on who their teacher is. Their grades should, should be based on what they know. And we've also talked a lot with teachers about making sure the grade reflects content knowledge and not discipline issues or behavior issues that might manifest themselves in the classroom because that, we need the grades to tell kids and parents what the child knows and where the child needs to focus in order to achieve the curricular goals. So anyway, this work is ongoing throughout the school year. We do have all of our director meetings focused on this topic. Some of our early evidence of change has been completed, but most of it is ongoing. So for example, the second one, at least 25 additional teachers will complete this Making Student Thinking Visible course. And that course is not scheduled to complete until the end of the year, so this is an ongoing piece. Other pieces have already been completed, but there's certainly plenty of work to do in this area. And then our fourth strategic initiative is to provide ongoing professional development to teachers and administrators on effective assessment and grading. And you can see here, this is the same one. Did I just do? We have the same goal twice. All right. So this is not my fourth goal. Let me see if I can get it up here quickly. Let me see if I can get it up here quickly. I don't know if I'm going to be able to pull this up. Okay. Here's the fourth goal. Sorry, that was not copied properly into that. So our fourth strategic objective, let's look here, is to develop consistency with grading practices across subject areas, classes, and schools within the district to ensure equity for all students. And this is a piece that I did just talk about. But you'll see that some of this, as you know, we have finished our core beliefs around grading practices document last year, making sure that that's aligned with our actual practices and that teachers are calibrated on what things mean is where we are focusing our energy this year. One of these pieces, all administrators embrace and share the vision of the district's philosophy on grading practices and policies. We've listed as completed, and that's after focus groups and interviews with administrators who have acknowledged that that's what they do. In terms of measuring the early evidence of change, again, most of this is ongoing because they are pieces that we don't anticipate will be finished until June, but we do have two pieces completed. One is the piece on the director meetings. All teachers will spend time comparing their grading practices and calibrating them. They've actually spent a full session doing that already. There's another one scheduled for later this year. And then this third step, members of the grading practice subcommittee will collect sample grading policies from their colleagues and compare them to the core beliefs document has already happened as well. So I would say that there's definitely more work to do. Thankfully, there's more time left in the school year. We do anticipate that we'll meet these goals as set by the end of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any members have any questions? We will move on to the student representative report. Ali.
Thank you. I just wanted to start off by saying congratulations to all the winter sports. The season is coming to a wrap. Congratulations to the boys and girls swim team, basketball team, and indoor track, as well as the boys hockey team, and also a special congratulations to the cheerleading team for being named the NEC champs.
They did a great job.
Yep. Make us proud. Good luck to the Model UN team, which will be competing at the Northeastern Greater Boston Model UN competition this Friday. Fifteen or sixteen RHS students will be represented there. Good luck to them. A lot of people are getting more involved in the Model UN, which really goes to show a lot of the character of Revere High School students, are really trying to get involved in a lot of the stuff that goes on in the world. And also regarding Model UN, six RHS seniors will be traveling to New York from March 6th to March 9th. Many of these students, these students will be representing the Republic of Honduras, which will be represented through four committees. Many of the issues that we are going to be targeting are issues that are prevalent to us today, especially in Revere. A lot of the issues that we are talking about are social issues, which are applicable to many of the challenges and many of the stripes we face on the daily. Also, congratulations to Seba Ismail for earning a spot, for her performance at the National Speech and Debate Championships, which will be held in Milwaukee, Wisconsin in May. So pending that, we'll see where that takes us. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, so we were going to present some sort of, like, presentation, which encompasses everything, but Revere students really had a great representation. Six students were awarded some sort of award out of the 24 possible awards. So Revere students took a fourth to a fifth of the awards that were there. So it was really great to kind of see the relationships and a lot of the bonds that we made with students from throughout the world. It was really eye-opening to see that Revere students are really putting themselves out there and wanting to kind of expand their horizons and understand other cultural pieces. And I think that really comes from kind of the diversity piece that we're growing up with and the diversity piece that we've been experiencing our whole lives. So I know personally, I'm grateful for being put in that situation. I know all the students as well are. A more extensive presentation will be made public in the next meeting.
We definitely look forward to that.
We will have the team from, or at least a subgroup of the team from Beijing here next month to do the student presentation.
Exactly.
Okay. We're on to public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Motion to accept.
Accept, motion to accept, second roll call.
Mr. Feranti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravalese.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Absent.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mr. Visconti.
Yes.
Mayor Ariga.
Yes. The consent calendar is approved, and we'll move on to the report of subcommittees. Mr. Feranti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the present time, I'd like to thank the committee for making me the vice chair and making Mr. Visconti the secretary. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good comments. Yeah, thank you. At the present time, I would like to announce our standing subcommittees. The first committee is the personnel. Carol Ty will be the chair.
Which is on the board, if that's...
Well, I can read it from here. Somebody over here. Michael Feranti and Stacy Rizzo. The plant and maintenance, Jerry Visconti is the chair, Michael Feranti and Fred Sinella on the committee. The ways and means, Michael Feranti is the chair, Carol Ty and Jerry Visconti. The policies and procedure, Stacy Rizzo chair, Susan Gravalese, Fred Sinella members. Health and special ed, Susan Gravalese chair, Carol Ty and Jerry Visconti members. Safety and security, Fred Sinella chair, Susan Gravalese and Stacy Rizzo members. The committee, the hall, will do the superintendent evaluation, government relations, and community relations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Feranti. We'll move on to new business. Any members have any new business? None. We'll go on to school committee interests. Any members? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment with the expectation that we would come back here on April 23rd.
March 23rd.
March 23rd. March 26th.
Want to try it again?
My apologies. I skipped a month. March 26th. Okay. Moved to adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you.